Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting Wednesday, July the 14th, 2021. You all have your agenda in front of you. If there are any additions or deletions to the agenda, it is circulated. If not, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Consular Allen, seconded by Consular Nick Hilton. Motion of the floor to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Yes.
My apologies. I haven't been...
Turn on your microphone.
I'm still getting used to the non-Zone meetings, so. If we could revisit, I know we've already passed a motion, but I'll make an amendment to the... I'd like to add to the in-camera session, "Meetings for Official Business." So I'd like to move that as an addition to the...
Yeah, no, that would be the council agenda, actually, Deputy Warden.
Oh, so when we come out of the Committee of the Whole...
So when we come out of the Committee of the Whole, you can do that there in the council agenda, and actually, that one there, I'm gonna have to... I'm gonna have to declare conflict in that one, too, so you're gonna take over part of that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion stands as it was presented. All right. Any declaration of conflict interest, when the item comes up, please make it noted and step away from the table, and the recording secretary will record that in a minute. Presentations, 5.1. We have with us today John Kearney from Land Conversate... Conver... I can't speak this morning. Land Conservation. So, John, if you wish, you can come up to the microphone there and just hit the red button, the light will start flashing, I'll turn on the mic, and you can start your presentation. Just hit the red button on the thing, all right? Turning the mic on, so people can hear you live. There you go, John, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to make this presentation this morning. I live in Beaver River, Yarmouth County, and I'm one of Patty's constituents, and I also want to make clear that I first made the request to make this presentation at least two months ago to Patty, so that... I say that because there may be some overlap with what the protesters are here for today, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. So I'm just gonna go into this presentation about conserving biodiversity through the creation of protected areas. So what I'll be talking about is an introduction to a project that I'm working on that's funded by the federal government, and another government funding project... Another government funding initiative is called the Challenge Fund. I'm gonna talk about the importance of Yarmouth County for migratory birds. I'm going to identify... Talk about identifying areas for protection within the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, and I'm gonna discuss the potential social and economic benefits. And on the latter point, I could talk much more extensively than the 10 minutes that I've been allotted, but I can... If you're interested, I can give you more information or come back another time. So, "The Listening Together Project" seeks to engage MiGMA communities, naturalists, and environmental organizations in biodiversity conservation through bioacoustics. And it's... The project takes place in the region of Gezbuick, which, as I'm sure you know, is... Was the jurisdiction of the MiGMA for this area before it was the municipality of Yarmouth. So this project is funded by the Canada Nature Fund through their Priority Places Program, and southwest Nova Scotia is a priority place because of the amount of biodiversity here and the extent to which it is at risk. So there's a special funding just for Gezbuick. And you can see the partners, I'm not gonna list all of them. I'm the lead on this project, and it includes First Nations, University, Environmental Organization, Provincial Government, and Federal Government. However, "The Listening Together Project" is also funded through another component of the Canada Nature Fund called the Challenge Fund, and this is administered in Nova Scotia by the Department of Environment and Climate Change, and its objectives are to ensure Canada's wildlife and habitat is conserved and protected, that Canada's species at risk are recovered, and "Listening Together" receives funding from the Challenge Fund in additional to the Priority Place to identify areas of high biodiversity importance and help prioritize land securement for protected areas. So I'm gonna talk about what the focal point of our work in "Listening Together" in Gezbuick is on migratory birds, and this... With this slide, I hope to explain to you why this is so important. I have been studying migratory birds since 2010 or so through bioacoustics, which basically means at night, I put out microphones that listen for migratory birds as they're migrating. Most birds migrate at night, and when they do, they call to each other, and they have very distinctive calls that you can identify right to the species level, even though to our ear, they sound all the same. If you look at them with a spec... As a spectrogram, you can identify most of them to species. So I've been doing this, I've surveyed about 20 different locations in Nova Scotia, from northeast Nova Scotia to southwest Nova Scotia and Yarmouth County. So in northeastern Nova Scotia, out of the sites I surveyed there, in the course of a season, I would record between 8,000 and 15,000 of these night flight calls. So that's just in a cone of atmosphere above the microphone. You know, with the course of the season, you'd hear that many calls. And if you go out at night and listen carefully, you can hear this anytime in September as they're going over. Now, if you... Now, the surveys I've done in Yarmouth County, and they're actually all in the municipality of Yarmouth, the number of calls per season is from 15,000 to 45,000. So the traffic is three times higher here than it is in the rest of the province. And as you can see, those white arrows indicate what radar studies show us is the direction birds are flying during their autumn migration. They travel southwest through the province till they get to Yarmouth County, and then they have to rest and nourish themselves for a flight over water, which for a bird is a big deal. And so from there, they'll take off from Yarmouth County, they'll either head over to down east Maine, or across the Gulf of Maine to southern New England, or directly out over the ocean to the Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, Haiti. So this is a spectacular thing that's occurring in Yarmouth County every autumn, and we're just beginning to enter that now. So in the next slide, these are the... Just some of the most important concentration points for these migratory birds. They would be Beaver River, Pembroke, Cape for Shu, Chabogue Point, and Pickney's Point. These are the major staging areas, and by staging areas, that's where these birds, they're not only feeding, but they're getting ready. There's a kind of social dynamic that there's a scientific word for called zogenru, where they're getting all excited, sort of giving themselves pep talks about this dangerous journey that they're about to take. And they have to wait, once they get here, they have to wait for the right weather conditions. So this is all going on mainly on our headlands and coastal areas. And I want to look at one particular bird, in particular, the Canada Warbler. The Canada Warbler is very important because it's listed as a threatened species by... In Canada Species at Risk Act. So the map on the left shows all the... Shows all my monitoring stations over the last 10 years, and how many Canada Warblers were recorded each fall at one of those stations. So if you compare the bar... The length of the bars in northeastern Nova Scotia to the length of the bars in southwest Nova Scotia, in particular in the Yarmouth municipality, you can see they're much higher, and at the site of Beaver River, the... It's actually because of the slide, it's almost off the slide. It's off the map because there wasn't room on the map, but if you see on the edge of the slide there, that red bar going up, that represents 868 Canada Warbler calls. I couldn't fit it on the map, and unfortunately, it's almost off the slide here. There's just so many of this threatened species passing over this little spot in Beaver River, which means they're also passing in other parts of Yarmouth County as well. So coastal Yarmouth County is a major stopover area and a pasture quarter for this species at risk. And from what we know, the Bay of Fundy and the Gulf of Maine is the only major body of water that it crosses on its long journey each year to the Andean slopes from Venezuela to Peru. So they're just embarking on an extremely long journey at this point, and they start off with their most difficult part, that's crossing the Gulf of Maine. So "The Listening Together Project," what we're gonna be doing is using bioacoustics to identify six properties in Gezbuick in both 2021 and another six in 2022 as candidates for protection by the province of Nova Scotia. At all stages, this work is done in close collaboration with the Protected Areas and Ecosystems Program of the Nova Scotia Department of Environment and Climate Change. So everything that I do is done with their knowledge, with their approval, and with permission of landowners, et cetera. And then finally, the benefits of protected areas. Well, there's many. The recognition of Yarmouth County as a biodiversity hotspot would be one. It maintains the natural beauty that attracts people to come to live here, and there is the ecotourism that develops in relationship to protected areas. Just in a 2006 government study in the U.S. showed that bird watching and wildlife watching provided $75.9 billion in economic benefits. That total is more than recreational fishing and hunting combined in terms of its economic value. And that's only going to be increasing now because the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly increased the number of bird watchers and the demand for parks and nature reserves. Because of the conditions that we were living under for a year or more, people went outside because it was safe to go outside, and they gained a new appreciation of nature they didn't have before, and it's just incredible that all the new projects involving people in bird watching. And then finally, and I don't have time to discuss that here today, but there's a report done by the consulting firm Gardner-Pinfold, which is one of the big consulting firms in Nova Scotia, who did a 100-page report just on the economic benefits of protected areas in Nova Scotia. And that is definitely worth reading because it's gonna give you much more information on how the municipality can economically benefit and socially benefit from those... From these protected areas. I'll just say that in the... I don't know if I have much time left, but some of those benefits, there are commercial benefits, not only do... Are there ecotourism, tour guides, and all kinds of associated benefits, but other studies have shown that people, that other businesses benefit by living near a protected area because people are more likely to go to visit that business if they get to go past a protected area, or it's near a protected area. And then the social benefits, I think, are particularly beneficial because of how protected areas conserve water quality and drinking water and pollination, nutrient recycling, waste filtration. These are all what are called ecosystem services that are critically important for us to have drinking water and clean air to breathe. So finally, I'll conclude with what can you do? Well, if you're interested, I'd be... I would enjoy having any help that you want to offer in identifying land that you think should be protected, and the general... Or spreading the word that we're looking for land, and that what basically we're looking for is land approximately 50 to 200 acres in size with... That's forested with open areas and wetlands, and within 2 kilometers of the coast, and they should contact me if they have a suggestion to make. So thank you very much. I hope I stayed within my time limit, and again, I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much, John. Is there any questions from Consellers? I do believe the first one would be Deputy Warden. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much for conveying so much information in a short period of time. It's very much appreciated, and the fact that you're using sound to, you know, verify how many birds and so forth are moving through the areas is important, and I know it is certainly an activity that's increasing in scope sort of economically from, you know, all along southwest Nova Scotia. Very, very important thing. We are going through... I'm Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee, and we are going through a municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw review, so it may be useful... I've got the Gardner-Pinfold study written down here, and we may work with the company that are actually, you know, helping us with that work, and this is a facet that I would... I'd like to look at in terms of incorporating that into our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. The other piece is feral cats. How big an issue are feral cats?
Well, it's funny you should mention that because the last time I was here making a presentation to the council was about the cat problem in Yarmouth municipality, and that led eventually to... I believe my talk led to the tax for cats.
Yes.
But what I had recommended in that talk was a... Was an educational process begun, because it's a sensitive issue, you know, for people, their cats, and whether they can go outside or not. So it's not only feral cats, but it's also the putty cat. That's a problem. So, yes, the cats are considered the number-one cause of bird mortality in North America, anthropogenic cause of bird mortality. Now, you have to qualify that because cats are limited... Birds aren't... Cats and the birds fly overhead, right? They're limited to birds that are... Inhabit the ground, close to... Are low in bushes. So they... So they impact disproportionately some species, but without saying, going into greater detail, it is a... It is a problem, and it's also a human health problem, too, because cats do carry diseases that especially pregnant women are vulnerable to. So it's not really healthy to have cats roaming around our neighborhoods.
The next one would be Consular Cushing. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thanks for your presentation. On your flight paths that you showed there, and you say the migrating birds only migrate at nighttime?
Most birds migrate at night. Some birds migrate during the day.
How did you know that flight path?
From radar studies.
Radar?
Yes.
How does a radar pick them up, I wonder?
The radar... So when you... The best way to see this is not to look at Canadian radar, but U.S. radar, because...
Yeah, that's the way it always is.
You know that story, right?
Yeah.
When it comes to the fishing industry. But if you look at U.S. radar, when it's not raining, they switch the radar to what's called clear air mode, okay? And under clear air mode, when birds are migrating, the radar lights up with all these echoes, and they're... It's like a big circle, and that... The density of that circle tells you how many birds are migrating, and they can tell the velocity, so you can have a rough idea of whether a big bird or a little bird, and you can see what direction they're traveling, okay? By the way the targets are moving.
Right.
So you get a very clear picture. So in Nova Scotia, as in New England, most of that... Those birds are traveling southwest, but on a microscale, there's a lot of variation. So some students at Acadia University use marine radars to track birds crossing from Yarmouth County, Digby County, crossing the Bay of Fundy, to see what direction they're going to. So birds can vary in those cases from a southwesterly to a westerly or even northwesterly direction to make a quick trip across the Bay of Fundy, because they don't... A lot of birds, they just don't want to take that long journey out over the Gulf of Maine. Once you're out there, there's no turning back, there's no place to land, and so... Whereas if they cross that Bay of Fundy, they get across, and then they're all traveling along land, and at that point, their main threat is gonna be predators.
Yeah. I know years ago, when I was in another section, we'd have birds land on our boats and maybe way offshore, long line, but not.
Yes, yes.
So that's probably what they're...
That's... Those are birds that are generally in trouble, or they're attracted by lights. So one thing you... You know, I can't say is that lights are a big problem for birds, and we're just realizing how much that is a problem. Lights in areas where birds are migrating, migrated, attracts birds, and attracts them in big numbers, attracts them from as far as 2 kilometers away, and you may not see them dead around the light in the morning. Sometimes you will, but a number of things can happen from those lights. They either use up all their energy reserves, and their physical condition is compromised for migration, or they just die of exhaustion, they just drop somewhere away from that. So lighting is an increasing problem. It's being recognized increasingly as a problem, and you're gonna be hearing more about lighting as time progresses because we're still relatively dark in Nova Scotia, but that is changing. If you look at Google Maps, you can look at our Google Earth, you can see a lighting map of North America, and you can see we're still pretty dark here in Nova Scotia. You can see Yarmouth lighted up, you can see Halifax lighted up, you can see the valley lighted up, but between that, it's dark. But that's changing. And so a bird that has just been listed recently as threatened is the Leeches Storm Petro that nests on our offshore islands, and they don't know entirely why Leeches Storm Petro... You probably know if you're fishing one of Leeches Storm Petro, those, these little birds that look like swallows, how to see. They're now dying off rapidly throughout their range, and they think one of the main reasons is because of lights. So I'm just using it as an example of why this is gonna be more and more on your radar as time progresses.
My last question to you is, you talk about the benefits of the bird watching of $75 billion in study in the USA. Is there any study for Nova Scotia or Canada? I'm trying to figure how are we gonna be able to capitalize on it?
Major Canada did one, and I didn't... But I didn't quote that because it was done in 2003. This one's 2017. I would say, though, that, yes, there's no question. I mean, anybody who lives at Cape for Shu or Chabogue Point knows, they see the cars lined up along the road during the migration season of bird watchers, and that's just local people. And people from all over Nova Scotia and the Maritimes come to Chabogue Point for bird watching, because it's one of the best places for birds in the municipality and probably in Nova Scotia. And so that's... So there's, you know, that isn't indicated. It doesn't give you evidence, but I really recommend the Gardner-Pinfold report. It's not gonna give you numbers because they're gonna say that you don't... That the studies haven't been done yet of ecotourism in Nova Scotia. There's tourism, but not ecotourism. And but they do... In the Gardner-Pinfold report, they do give case studies of different places in Nova Scotia of how they have benefited. And one place that they don't mention and should have is Briar Island. Briar Island was, you know, a fishing community. Groundfish was key to the economy of Briar Island, and now major tourism is key, along with the lobster fishery, to the economic survival of that island. So it's an example, I think, of how important this can be economically and socially, and again, it's not just the dollar... The dollar figures, it's why people come here. There's people who moved to the tri-counties because there's birds here, because of all the birds that are here.
We have a couple moved into Cape for Shu for that.
What's that?
See, we had a couple that moved from Halifax to Cape for Shu.
That's right, and in Cape Sable Island, there's people who have moved to Cape Sable Island because... From England, because of the...
Because they're bird watchers and the reputation of this area for birds. I won't take up anywhere of your time.
I'm sorry, did you ask any question?
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. The next one would be Consular Durkey. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, that was fascinating, and I couldn't agree with you more that due to COVID, I think people have really started to appreciate nature so much more again, which is so important. I certainly know I have. So just a couple of things that... So you're looking for land to... For the province to purchase, to...
Yes.
Right? And will that land be accessible to bird watchers is one of the...
Well, the primary purpose of a protected area is to conserve biodiversity. So any activities that would take place on that land would have to conserve biodiversity.
Yes.
So in the case, we did... I started this work last year, and we've already saved one... We've... The province has already purchased one piece of land in Clare, not far from here, but in Clare, and it's not made public yet that this is happening.
It is now.
Or where it is, or...
Yes.
Or what its status is gonna be. But from what I have... What I... From what I have learned, something like that, sort of the level of development would be a trail and a parking lot.
Okay.
Type of thing.
Yeah, that would be great. And is the UNESCO Biosphere, which is housed in the Killam Building, are they aware of this study, and do they have that information to share? Because I think for looking for property, that they would be a real help with that as well.
No, that's an excellent suggestion, and I know people there.
Yes.
They'd be good to contact.
Okay, thank you, because, you know, they're certainly gearing up for the summer visitors, and I think it's really important for people to know, have this information at their fingertips. Also, you mentioned about ecotourism, and we know that that's growing, and so therefore, I think an organization like Ignite Labs, they're looking at many different businesses, should be also made aware of this scenario because that could help with their promotion of ecotourism if their businesses start moving in that direction, and I believe there is some of that. And that goes also with, you know, Celtic Air and our airport, that, you know, once this becomes... Information becomes more available, then people are from away are more aware that this is happening. And I think, like, Celtic Air is doing ecotourism in Port Hoxbury and bringing people there, not just for... But for the hunting and the fishing and the bird watching, and so they should be aware, too, that this is what's going on here.
Yes.
Thank you.
So one of the reasons that... last year is that a lot of the protected areas, Yarmouth, Digby, Shobrin, I've sort of lost out in the in the number of protected areas compared to other areas. And and I I mentioned that because this is real, that the province is really committed to protecting biodiversity, but also recognizing that there's been a gap in in this region.
Counselor Allen, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just curious, as as climate has been changing, are you seeing are you seeing a different season for migration? Is migration still as prominent as it once was? I know like I live I live down towards Pickney's Point Way and the the goose or geese, however you want to call it, they they seem to stay around a lot more. I mean, I realize they're a big bird, but they're around a lot more than they used to be. I have had the I have had the pleasure of being a home to a couple of the Canadian warblers out fishing that have come aboard and sat on the windows and watched for a while. Unfortunately, it seems like the minute they get out of there, the seagulls are all over them and it's like a natural predator.
It's it's really dangerous time for them to be going out over that water.
So I'm just wondering, like, are we starting to see are we starting to see more of these birds stay as opposed to go?
Yeah, it's and it's sort of the opposite in the spring and the fall. In the spring, they're they're going through faster than ever and they're coming earlier. In the fall, they're staying later, but they're drawing it out longer. They're 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 migrating slower in the fall and over a longer period of time. Whereas in the spring, they're having to accelerate because all their food is appearing earlier. And for some birds, they just if you're coming from Argentina, there's only so much you can accelerate to get here in time for when all those larvae and insects come out on the trees.
All right, thank you.
Sure, good question.
Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So obviously on your way in, you're seeing some people that were also concerned about the environment.
Yes.
What is the process for purchasing land? You know, is that it's a provincial fund that does that or is that something that you fundraised for?
It would be strictly done, I would have no involvement in that. It would strictly be done by the Protected Areas and Ecosystems Program of the Nova Scotia Department of Environment and Climate Change. They make all the outreach before and after to landowners and they negotiate the price of the land if if the if the landowner is willing to negotiate. So and so that's that's the extent of my knowledge. My job is to find is to use my expertise to find places of high biodiversity value in this area.
All right, thank you very much. Since there's no microphones, thank you very much, John, for coming in to counsel. I know that we get a lot of information and I seen that you were writing down some notes too. So you get some information from us, which is.
That's right.
Which is always good.
Yeah.
So thank you very much again for coming in and appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. So now Vicki's going to clean the tables during the COVID nineteen protocols.
Frank can just sit on the other side.
Oh, Frank can sit on the other side.
Just use a stand while Frank can.
You're prerogative.
Thanks for saving the people. All right. Hold on. I don't think I have any. But I had one the other day, he drive fly right into my car. I'm driving along and he's crawling on me.
Is there a guy standing in the building?
I I have one, but I don't care who it is.
You have one in the building?
No, I have one that's old.
Oh, that's handy.
All right, we're here to do a report by recreation. I suppose it would be recreation if we were all running for Frank's Frank's EpiPen. All right, we have in front of us Frank Grant, the the EpiPen guy, the director of recreation. I'm sorry to make a way to or fun of that, but it's not a fluffing matter. But thank you very much, Frank, for for coming in and we're looking forward to your report.
Thank you, Warden Cunningham, and thank you to council for having me. What a perfect day for a recreation report because July the fourteenth is today and we just entered another phase, which July fourteenth is basically the start of our somewhat normal summer. Today, we have our sports camp and our Summer Fund Day Camp going for children ages five to twelve with great attendance. So it today almost feels like a normal summer day. So instead of an eight-week program, we're we're having more of a six-week summer program. But with everything that's gone on in the last eighteen months, it's a it's a delight to be back doing the things that we do. And, you know, the recreation department does do a lot more than summer day camps, but I think it is the one thing that we are most known for is the the, you know, the different activities that are planned each day for for children ages five to twelve. So I'm just going to highlight a few things. Sarah LeBlanc, our community recreation coordinator, has been busy the last few weeks with hiring staff and training staff and getting all of our our different activity days planned for go time today. And one thing I did want to mention with both Sarah LeBlanc, our our community rec coordinator, and Gillian Camo, our our community engagement officer, this is really the first time they've been with us a year and a half. This is the first time that they've really got their feet wet with summer program, with registration, with developing our programs. Both of them are relatively new to the community. So it's been and and with us working from home, with a lot of community, community groups not being as active as normal, it's been quite challenging on on staff to develop our programs and and to to get things going. So kudos to both of them and I'll mention a little bit more as as I go on in our presentation. So Summer Fund Day Camp, Sports Camp, we've launched our registration and we have pretty pretty good numbers for for our summer. We did get a little bit of a curve ball that we were planning up until Monday for groups of twenty-four maximum of participants as per provincial guidelines. But on Monday, Dr. Strang did up those numbers to thirty participants plus staff. So luckily, we did have waiting lists in a lot of our camp days that we have reached out and been able to fill those days. So most of our our Summer Fund Day Camp is the the camp for five to eight-year-olds. Most of those days are full for the for the rest of the summer. So anywhere from twenty-four to thirty participants each day. Sports Camp right now is averaging around eighteen per day, but I assume as summer goes on, we're going to get some more people popping in and doing some activities. One neat activity that is new this year is our and it it is spelled wrong in my report, so I apologize, Sprint Kayak Camp. Next week, we we are doing a Sprint Kayak Camp for two weeks and very fortunate that we have a local Sprint kayak coach that has moved to the area. Laura Baxter is going to be leading that camp as a volunteer with plans that after this two-week camp and an intro to to the program, that we will develop a club over the offseason and have sprint kayaking as a regular activity at Lake Milo in the summer. For the for those of you that don't know the difference between sprint kayak and regular kayak, recreational kayaks that we have for rentals are a lot wider. The sprint kayaks are longer and narrower and they're they're basically built for speed and and you see them in the Olympic Games and that sort of thing where you kneel on 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 one knee and it's almost like from a sitting position that you're you're paddling. So that was that was kind of neat for us to be able to partner with Laura and her team and as well be supported by our our coach and our staff at Milo. So we also do have a regular canoe kayak camp that we have happening throughout the summer. We have eight two age groups that have activities in the morning, ages seven to eleven and then twelve to seventeen. And we also, it's not mentioned in my report, but we also have family canoe kayak time as well available if families want to come and and take part in in lessons as a family. One of the things that I wanted to mention as well is that we we did very well with summer student grants and some other federal grants as well. We we did receive forty-three thousand dollars from Canada Summer Jobs, forty-three thousand. So that's pretty much every position that we hired was funded at nine dollars and seventeen cents per hour. So doesn't cover all the weeks of employment, but covers eight weeks of employment and most of our staff are making between thirteen-ten and fourteen-ten an hour. So when Chris Dontrmont's office phoned us, they told us that that's the biggest student grant that they've ever seen come out of their office. And in the past, we've usually had maybe three or four students funded each year. So very fortunate that with that with that grant and and it wasn't anticipated that we were going to receive that much funding, that will allow us to do some some other things that that are going to be well appreciated in the community. The other grant that we received, we did receive funding for from Heritage Canada and Celebrate Canada, just under eighty-eight hundred dollars to Celebrate Canada Day. So we all know that Canada Day did not happen on July first for a number of reasons, but really the the gathering restrictions were the the main issue as far as any big celebrations on the waterfront or fireworks or any large gatherings. So we have been approved to celebrate Canada Day anytime from July the first to September sixth, when gathering restrictions allow us to. So that funding has not gone away. I'm hoping that if things continue the way that they are, that we will have a huge celebration that we can incorporate our our Canada Day celebrations into and have a end of summer, end of pandemic party. So yeah, so that's kind of exciting. John Darcy, our facilities coordinator, really throughout the pandemic, even into last summer, John and his crew were still doing a lot of activities, still doing the maintenance because we felt it was one last summer, we didn't know when restrictions were going to change, so we had to keep our fields up in case soccer got noticed that they could go if leagues started up again. So our our facilities crew have been still working on our fields, working on our trails, maintaining things. The good thing with this summer is that we have all of our minors outdoor minor sports haven't really missed a hiccup. They're they're continuing on Yarmouth Clipper Soccer, both house league and rep, Yarmouth Area Minor Baseball, both house league and rep, and our our coed slupage league just started this week with play. Now, they're usually a twenty-team league, they're down to twelve. They did lose some interest with the later start, but we're hoping that with everything how it how it worked out is that they'll have a longer season going into the fall. Lake Milo has been a busy spot. You know, we we have lifeguards there seven days a week, starting on Canada Day. We have staff there all day, starting the week of of Canada Day week. They're doing rentals for the community and and maintaining the building. I did want to note that we did have some issues when lifeguards were not present on staff and and our staff were not there for a full eight-to-eight shift. We did have some incidents of some bullying, some violence, there were some fights that happened at Milo. So the RCMP were involved. And as soon as the lifeguard started and they have their regular presence and that we have staff on there every day from eight till eight, that activity went away. So so we always try to gauge our when we have set up at Milo to put the docks out not long before the lifeguard start because if we put the docks out, then that increases our risk of of activities happening there that are unwanted or potential injuries that could happen from kids diving or jumping off the docks. So I'm thinking next summer, if we do have a little bit of a gap between when our our full staff start at Milo and school is ending, we may have to look at some hiring some security to be on in the evenings to try to thwart some of those activities that were happening. The good thing, there wasn't anything major as far as injuries, but I did get a few calls from the RCMP. They came and we do have cameras there, so they requested some video and they they did pursue some charges with a few individuals. But ever since our staff started, we haven't had any reports of any issues of of negative activities happening there. One of the things with with both Argyle and Recreation and Yarmouth Recreation, we've been involved with the Mariner Center Expansion Committee and we've been involved, I guess, with working with with Duran Hadib at the Mariner Center with trying to do some different things at Mariner Center. And pickleball is one of the things that I did want to highlight, that John Darcy did put pickleball pickleball court lines in the Antony Pavilion. And with gathering restrictions lifting, we just started last night with drop-in pickleball in the Antony Pavilion. So that is open to the general public on Tuesdays and Thursdays and we're going to watch that for activity to see if another night needs to be added. I just wanted to mention, I mentioned a little bit about Gillian and Sarah, but with with Gillian, Gillian is basically our our new Gail, but her job has has changed a bit. She has more duties than administrative duties. Yes, she is the one doing all the registrations, collecting all the fees, answering the phones, doing all the important admin stuff. But one of the things we wanted and we identified with with Gail Muse's retirement was we need that extra support with our facilities. So Gillian has been a big help in connecting more with John and our user needs with our facilities. And she's also been a support with our our seasonal staff at the Lake Milo Boat Club as well as our supervisor at the Yarmouth Skate Park. New activities, I've participated in both strategic planning exercises that both councils of the Town of Yarmouth and the Municipality of Yarmouth have held. And it was greatly appreciated that in both cases, recreation is high on both councils' lists. And one of the things that we haven't been able to do in some time is have a recreation committee meeting. So we 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 are planning to have a rec committee meeting. The municipality has appointed their their municipal council reps as well as their municipal citizen reps. And the Town of Yarmouth has their council reps in place, but not their citizen reps. At the last Town of Yarmouth Committee, the whole meeting, they did make a motion that if committees are not fully filled, meetings can still happen in the interim. So we are planning to get together sometime soon as a recreation committee, just to go over things, just, you know, we haven't been able to meet a lot during COVID and basically lay the 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 plans for the summer. And one of the big things, well, two two big items for our rec committee is the review of our physical activity strategy and a new project. Just to go over things, just, you know, we haven't been able to meet a lot during COVID. And basically lay the, the, the plans for the summer. And one of the big things, well, two, two big items for our rec committee is the review of our physical activity strategy and a new project moving forward with a strategic plan for the Recreation Department. I included a copy of our budget. I'm not going to go over that, but I just wanted to let council know that this report was as of July the 7th and we are tracking very well as far as revenues and expenses. We did, we've already exceeded what we had hoped for our summer program revenues. Basically because when we did our budget back in March, we were uncertain as to what gathering restrictions would look like for the summer. So very fortunate that we're operating almost at a, a normal rate. And the final thing I wanted to mention was just a few projects that we have on the go as far as the Recreation Department and capital projects are dealt with through each council now. They do not, that's why on the, on the budget report you see a zero in for capital. Any projects that are happening in the municipality are dealt with by municipal council. And any projects in the Town of Yarmouth are held, are, are paid for by the Town of Yarmouth. So we are looking at doing some renovations at Lake Milo, focusing on the upstairs hall, windows, doors, fire escape and some accessibility issues. We are purchasing a new truck. We have been down a truck for the last month. So it's been kind of difficult with, with John and his crew only having one, one truck on the go. So we're looking forward to, that tender's already been opened and we're looking forward to having that in the next couple of months. We're looking again to do some road repairs at the Ebon Rec Complex. When the new Recreation and Public Works building was built, the road was repaired up to the, up to the new building. And we plan to continue that all the way down to the Rotary Center and Soccer Field. We are also are looking at addressing some lighting issues at the, at the Rec Complex. And also I'm learning quite a bit about different lighting options. We all know that we're part of the Dark Skies Initiative and any, any types of lighting that we plan to put up there, we're hoping that we will comply with our Dark Skies because the complex is a great spot for stargazing. And we also are planning to put a heat pump in at the clubhouse building down below at the Janet Smith Soccer, Soccer Field. The final thing is the, the damages with the vandalism that happened at the Fort Shu River Trail. We still have not, as far as I'm aware, I, I, we still have not laid official charges to the two individuals. The last correspondence I received from Constable Waiverchuck was that he went looking for one of the individuals and could not find him. So as far as I know, those activities are still moving forward with charges to be laid. And then once charges are laid, we will be looking for some restitution for the approximately $7,000 worth of damage done on the trail. The positive thing out of this is that we have moved forward in, in repairing that damaged section. So we did have to hire Rose Valley Construction to, to bring some of their equipment in and put some fill in. And so we are ma- making strides in having that loop down by the Fort Shu River repaired. I walked it yesterday. It's, it's walkable. And we put some ditching and some culvert in as well to hopefully make some improvements to, to where we've had some drainage issues in the past. So that's my report. I appreciate being able to give you an update on our activities. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much Frank for that. Please council, keep your questions short. If you need to ask Frank a long extended question, please wait until the, the end of the meeting. So please keep your, our time is running a little short. With that said, Councilor Lauren, question, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Frank, I'm glad to hear that we are going to get a recreation meeting going. You were talking about the, some of the not-so-pleasant activities at Milo and you had the, the RCP had to pop in. I, I did hear about it through the, some of the citizens. But I, just to give you some references, back in the, back in the day, we used to hire a commissioner.
This, this may have to talk, we talked about in camera in regards to public security. Counselor Durkey.
The next one that I have on here would be actually you, Counselor Durkey.
My mic's not working, but I can put on my teacher voice.
I have requests from Counselor Durkey, then the next one would be Counselor Hilton, and the next one. All right, I'm going to call a five-minute recess in order to get the microphones repaired so people can hear online. All right, we're back online. Thank you, everyone. We just finished Frank's presentation. We're going into questions for Frank. Please keep them brief. Counselor Durkey, you have the floor.
Thanks Frank, and I, I just wanted to, I had just asked Frank, and we'll just confirm it, that pickleball is Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:30 to 8:30, correct? At the Mariner Center and the information in future is on the Mariner Center website, is that correct?
Yes, yep. Tuesdays and Thursdays, 6:30 to 8:30, and there's a $5 drop-in fee. There's three courts there and it just started last night. And pickleball is one of those sports that's growing. You know, we, we generally do indoor gym activities in the fall/winter months. But we've had, you know, I guess with COVID, things are changing. So we, we now have some activities happening at Maple Grove Gym in the evenings during the summer. We have pickleball. It seemed like a decent crowd showed up last night, so. And with our 55-plus games happening in September, out of the 210 registrations that have been received so far, 86 of them were pickleball players. So we're going to have a huge pickleball, provincial pickleball tournament here in September.
So it just brings me to the next question, is what about the floor? You know, when you're in a gym, there's some bounce to the wood floor. And I think that the Anthony Pavilion is a cement floor, and so I just wondered if you've heard anything about the response?
The pickleball players were quickly sending emails this morning saying how great the court conditions were. And we, we thought the same thing, that going from a gym floor to a, a concrete floor may have some issues. But the Mariner Center staff did a great job cleaning, cleaning the pavilion and by all reports, everything was fine.
Awesome, thanks.
Any more questions? Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I'm, uh, thanks Frank. Sprint kayaking, you kind of piqued my interest there. Do we have equipment for that?
We do. We haven't run a sprint kayak program since 2005 to 2007. And the reason for that is leadership. We've, we haven't been able to, to, from 2005 to 2007, we had a coach coming down from Ottawa to work for us in the summer times and, and she was trained in sprint kayak. So that's one of the things with Milo programs, over the years, we, we rely a lot on the community to help with that. When we've had a good sailing program, we've had local leadership. When we lose that leadership, we often lose the program because sailing, for example, we do have sailing equipment. But sailing isn't something that I could just handpick someone and, and get them a course and get them on the water. It's a longer type of, of coaching certification. So with the sprint kayaking, Laura, she has experienced coaching at Lake Pinoc. And she's moved to, to Yarmouth in the last few years and she's all, she's pretty excited about starting a, a local club.
So you think there'll be any chance that in the next, I, I know it wouldn't happen this summer, in the next maybe two or three years, that we could see some type of boating festival on Lake Milo? Maybe the dragon boats and sprint kayaks, something of that nature? I know, I know it's been brought up vaguely before, but we have a great lake there and it'd be a great idea to have something take place.
So once, once a club is established, they affiliate with the Atlantic Division Canoe Kayak Association, kind of like what baseball does with Baseball Nova Scotia. So once that, a local club is affiliated, then all of their members have access to every regatta, every competition. You know, we always say that we're more on the recreational side. We just want kids in boats. But we know that there's a general progression that, yes, okay, a seven or eight-year-old gets in a, in a sprint kayak, probably not really high-level competition. But if, if that child is able to progress up later on, who knows? Maybe, maybe there's opportunities for higher-level competition and maybe there's opportunities for hosting here.
Awesome.
With the, with the dragon boating, there was no dragon boating on Milo last summer because of, of restrictions. And restrictions have lifted a little bit. I'm happy to say that there was a test boat that went out this week. Mark Hubbard and his volunteers rounded up some of the regular dragon boaters and they did take a paddle. I think there was only 10 in the boat. But with things progressing the way that they are, we should be having our drop-in dragon boat activities happening again at Milo. And those are free. Those are a couple of times a week and it's a drop-in activity and so we're, yeah. So we're, we're slowly getting back to somewhat of a normal and some new.
All right, thanks Frank.
Deputy Ward.
I'm going to be super brief because the hour is late. Frank, if you could add to the next, I'm on the recreation meeting, as you're well aware. To get to the next agenda, Lake Milo activities, I think we need to have more of a conversation about what types of, sort of the list of potential activities and what we'll do. Maybe a, a, a plan around how to approach, you know, growing the, the numbers of activities, staffing, volunteer availability, all those, all those factors. And also how those activities fit in with the, the Milo project that Counselor Bushings directing as a counselor and on, on that committee as a counselor. So anyway, if you could add that, that's a conversation I'd like to have there. Thanks.
Counselor Durkey.
Yes, sorry, quick question. Signage. I know that the town, on the town side, there's the little blue signs and I've now seen canoe and kayak rental. Has there ever been a big sign that goes across and says Milo Boat Club? And, and I, I just think that would be really nice to see a sign advertising what that is. Again, local people know, as Lauren would say, but people from away in this case might not know. So it would be nice to have something up there to attract people.
The, the only sign that I recall, and it's just been photos that I've seen, at one time where the crosswalk was, there was a "Welcome to Yarmouth" sign that did go across the roadway, but nothing Milo-related. You know, during the day from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we have the life, when the lifeguards are on, they have their safety flag that signifies that the, the, the swimming area is being guarded. For a safety reason, we, we do put pylons out in front of the building to, because a lot of people do park in front of the building where there is no parking allowed. And we do have to have that space designated for fire or ambulance services. Counselor Durkey mentioned the two signs. We do have two new signs on each end of the building that just basically says canoe and kayak rentals and to call the, the boat club number. As far as signage, that, you know, just basically, are you thinking just to signify Lake Milo Boat Club or Lake Milo Aquatic Club, something like that?
Yes, yes.
Because we do have a Facebook presence with a logo and all that sort of stuff. So that, that could be something that, I know there are sign bylaws and that sort of thing. We may be able to fix something to the building without any issues with the bylaw, but I can, I can check into that.
That would be great, thank you. I think it would really give a presence.
Anymore? Hearing none. Thank you very much Frank. I, I have an issue, but I'm going to send you an email about it in regards to the boat ramp and access to it. I will send you an email about that.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Item number six, we have no correspondence for action, but we have seven pieces of correspondence for your information. Is there any comments or concerns regarding that? Hearing none. Moving on to old business. Item 7.1. I do believe it was Counselor Sherri Hurlberg that asked to have this added in regards to meeting times. So Counselor Dur-, uh, sorry, my apologies. Counselor Hurlberg, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know that we talked about it at the last meeting and I think it will be an ongoing, I think it needs to be an ongoing discussion that we have, you know, sooner rather than later. I know that we have council members who have full-time jobs and I appreciate, you know, the commitment that we have to make to council, but I also think that we can come to some sort of compromise to know that, you know, our meetings could happen later in the day. I know today we have committee of the whole and then council to alleviate a nighttime meeting, but that also means I'm away from my job this afternoon where I wouldn't have been if I had had it at the end of the month. I, I just feel like we need to have some sort of discussion. I'm not sure if it needs to be around this table or not, but to come up with ways that we can be accommodating for all of us. I know that, you know, we have people who are retired, but we also have people who own businesses, who work part-time, who work full-time. And I'm just feeling that our evenings, I understand, you know, people are talking about, you know, barbecues and community events and things, but I think that, you know, more importantly, we're here to govern and make sure that we are accessible to staff, but also to our residents and making sure that I'm not burnt out at the end of a six-month period when I realize I've taken three weeks, three full weeks of daytime meetings away from my regular paid job. And I understand the commitment that was made, but I think that we just need to, I would appreciate having a conversation, maybe not today, but in the near future on how we can, you know, kind of come up with a better balance.
Deputy Ward.
All right, so I'm, I'm hearing people around the, and it's not only about this council, it's about subsequent councils and, you know, so forth. These, these timing of the meetings and so forth. We had a couple of people presented at the committee of the whole, you know, I'm sure they would have, you know, presented later on in the afternoon as opposed, so, as opposed to the, the morning. I don't, I don't think that's a factor. I've never really heard that as being a factor. So in any event, to, to move the conversation on to the regular council meeting, I'll move that we move in, in, in the fall, our, our September committee of the whole meeting and all meetings, all committee of the whole meetings forward, keep the same day and move it to a 3:00 PM start. That will give an hour and a half, sort of two hours of, of business time for public participation and, and, but anyway, I'll, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council at the next council meeting that, beginning September 2021, that we move the committee of the whole meeting to a three o'clock start.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Hurlberg. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? I don't see anyone's mics flashing, but I, at this time, I can't vote in favor of this, of that recommendation, move this forward to regular council. I would like a little bit more discussion on, on how we could possibly accommodate different people's schedules. Right now, I, I do work, I do work during the day, most generally. I do have a schedule that's worked out. I do take lots of time off. I do take lots of time off, however, I am paid through this position here, so there's a check and bounce there, but I, I do appreciate that, the thought about meetings at 3:00 p.m. starting there, but also I have other commitments as well. I also have fire department meetings, which happens Wednesdays, and they're usually early evenings. So, there's, there's a lot to consider than just throwing a date out there and, and times before you make a recommendation. So, at this time, I, I'd have to vote against the motion that's currently to be moved forward to council. It's just my two cents. However, at the end of the day, it is what it's going to be, and I'll have to move my schedules accordingly. Counselor Hurlbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Deputy Warden for bringing that forward. I think that, you know, I, I understand and I know the volunteer communities that, organizations that I'm involved in, and I have Girl Guides every Wednesday night, and it starts at 6:00, and so is that a sacrifice that I'm willing to make? I, you know, I would have to, you know, make that, knowing that my full-time job is what puts the roof over my head and the gas in my car, and, you know, we were talking at a NSFM, just a general chat, you know, about these jobs being paid as a part-time or, you know, you know, a monetary stipend, and, you know, you know, I mean, provincially, you know, this conversation is happening around the table, and I think that, you know, if, if we're here to do the job that we're supposed to do, I know that there are sacrifices, and for me, starting at 3:00, losing an hour of my workday is better than today, losing all of my workday. I, I do appreciate the 3:00 start time, and I think, you know, we, we could have more discussion, but I think we'll just, you know, in the last seven, eight months that I've been here, we just keep going around and around and around, and we don't really seem to be making any, any movement forward. Thank you.
Deputy Ward.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the motion is meant to bring closure to the issue at some point in time. There's been several counselors that have voiced concerns, that's why I put it on the table, to, to discuss at the council meeting. I mean, we, we could, we could talk about an alternate day other than Wednesday if it, if, you know, I mean, that, those are things, we, we could, we could amend the motion, those types of things, but I think that this, this will bring it to, bring, bring it to a, a conclusion, because we can talk about it, you know, as Counselor Hurlbert's talked about forever, but that's why I'll be voting for the motion, and certainly if there are adjustments, if Wednesday night's not good, you know, and community stuff's important too, for sure. If it's not good for a fire meeting, it might, it might be a Thursday night, I don't know, that's something we can talk about at the next council meeting, or, or, you know, we can entertain that, you know, maybe even we can talk about those personal pieces, we could even do an in-camera session around, you know, our, our personal commitments to community and those types of things, and, and, you know, to talk about that, and then, then come up our working session and, and then move it to council. But anyway, I'll, the motion should stand and we should have a vote.
Next one on the docket would be Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Counselor Hurlbert and Deputy Warden Cunningham. You know, again, we keep talking about it, and again, I'm not sure if this is the right table to be discussing our personal schedules or not, but, you know, just the importance that, you know, those two presentations this morning, like, we all want to be a part of those presentations, and that's, we're, we're, some of the new counselors are the reasons we're having so many presentations, because we want to ask and understand what's going on in our community. It does affect our, our work-life balance a little bit, and, but I think it's important to, to know that, you know, we do have day jobs, we aren't retired, but that makes us a diverse and inclusive council and brings, you know, a lot of perspective to the table. So, I think we need to have that conversation, and maybe like the Deputy Warden said, maybe not necessarily in front of the public. They know we're going to hold monthly meetings, that's what's important, and we'll be there to listen to the public, so thank you.
Counselor Lon Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've been sitting here listening to, to the, the reasoning for the change of times and whatnot, and I can appreciate your, your concerns and whatnot, and at the time when we were elected, we signed up to, to be a counselor, to represent our district and re-represent the municipality of Yarmouth, and although I am so-called semi-retired or retired, I still work. I still have a job to commit to, and I still can, I may be a little bit more flexible with my time for meetings and whatnot, but just think that down the road, if we have another council sitting around and, okay, well, somebody else now they want to change the times again to something else. I think we've got to have some type of structure in place that will stay in place, that the residents will see what's going on, they know that at a certain time this is going to happen. Next year it may change, somebody might want to change it again, you know, so, so I think there's a really, there's a really, we really got to have a, a good magnifying glass on this to really understand what we are asking of, so I'd like to see it to further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just want to remind council that, you know, this conversation is guided by Part Four of your, your council procedural policy, and the policy does call for that conversation to happen annually. Is the way you're coming together for Committee of the Whole in particular, is it working for the people who would like to have access to you? Is it working for you as a council? So, you know, I, I hear what everybody's saying about, you know, making sure to Counselor Cushing's point, the public is aware, they know when you're meeting, they know how to access you, but this, you know, this is called for, this conversation, so, you know, you don't even have to change your policy based on the motion that was made, because 3:00 is still in the daytime. So, just, just want to encourage you that this is healthy, this is okay to talk about.
Counselor Allen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, and, and, and I agree with that. It's just, the, the motion kind of is recommending that we move our Wednesday meeting till 3:00, and I just believe, I, I have no problem with meeting later in the day at all. Like, I'm, I'm fairly flexible. If I can be here, I'll be here. If I can't, well, that's, it's not anybody's fault but my own. No, but, but I don't know if Wednesday at 3:00. I know there's a lot of commitments that take place on the Wednesdays. I know there's days when we're trying to get through this because we have other commitments. So, I'm just wondering, like, I, I agree we need this conversation, I think we should settle it quickly, but I don't know. Your, your motion essentially says that on, at the next council meeting, we, we are going to recommend that we do it Wednesday night at 3:00, and I, I would just like to have more conversation around the, the day as opposed to the time. So, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can adjust it so that we can come to, you know, I don't think, it shouldn't be rocket science between us, I'm sure we can come to some kind of agreement on a good day to do it, so, or, or maybe I'm going to get corrected here, so, but that's just, that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, one thing I'd offer up for council to consider, because a lot of those commitments that happen in the evening are part of our regional collaborations with other partners, and the District of Yarmouth does Committee of the Whole on the second week, usually in the daytime, and quite likely maybe now in the late afternoon, and then on the fourth week, we do council in the evening. Our two most common partners, the Town of Yarmouth and the Municipality of Argyle, have their monthly schedule opposite to us, so they have their council, their evening meeting on the second week of the month, and their Committee of the Whole meeting on the fourth week of the month. So, some of those common Wednesday evening meetings are happening the second Wednesday of the month in the evening, because that was free and clear from all three councils from their meetings. So, if we put our thinking caps on, you know, we could even maybe go council on the second week, committee of the whole on the fourth week. And so, you know, we could, we could take a look at it. I know we do have regular council following this meeting today, but what we could do is, I could just make a few phone calls and try to figure out, you know, what are those advisory committee or other corporations that you're involved in? What are those meetings that would happen on a Wednesday evening, and, and which Wednesday of the month is it? And just help support you, because I do think Counselor Allen raises, raises a good issue. You know, your, your Committee of the Whole is your, what I call your workhorse. It's where you dig in, you get into your details, it's your longest meeting of the month, and so if we were to start at 3:00, as an administrator, I don't want to feel rushed. You have business that you attend to carefully and considerately, and you need time to do that, so that would be my only, you know, comment to share about moving to 3:00 on a Wednesday that maybe there's pressures for you to get to, to other commitments.
Deputy Warden.
Right, and, and the intention of, of the motion is to, to, to bring it forward to council, so to Counselor Allen's point, I, I agree, maybe the day's not right, maybe the time, could be scaled back to 2:30, but, you know, that, that seems reasonable as well. So, so why don't we leave the motion as it is with the understanding that, well, well, when it's read at the council meeting, it may not be the exact same motion that, that's coming forward here. I mean, you've got, you've got a, a statement for a later ti, a, a day, still a daytime, but a later in the day meeting, and we can take some conversation recommendation from the C E O, some feedback through, through, you know, additional conversation before, you know, and, and let's say we move this to, to give, to give plenty of time, we can move it to the, you know, council meeting in August even, because we're talking about a September. So, let's just leave the, leave the motion, we could talk about changing the motion, but we can, we can leave the motion as it is and make those adjustments, you know, in time for the August meeting. That's my recommendation, or we can change the motion if people want, you know, if they're more comfortable with that. I think it, I think it accomplishes a purpose one way or the other.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sherry, Counselor Hurlbert, for bringing this to our attention and for the motion on the table to move things forward. I find sometimes we spend so many, it takes so many meetings to make, make decisions that I'd like to see things happen faster, because we've had this discussion already. But I also wanted to bring forward that we all have different commitments on different nights of the week, and, and, you know, we may change the day, and someone else is going to have some commitment on that night, et cetera, so, so no matter what we do, there is going to be some issues, and, but, that being said, council is, takes priority, priority over all the other committees that we have to sit on, and, and if we have to change those things, I think that, to me, might work, but I'll be in favor of supporting of this motion.
Counselor Allen.
Yes, and, and I agree with you 100% Counselor Durkey, but I also, I guess my point was, I didn't want to, it's not that I don't want to rush the decision, I'd like it to be done, but as far as trying to figure out any type of schedule that maybe could work better, we have two meetings today, and I don't feel that it gives us enough time to, to generate that maybe the better day. Maybe, maybe there's less, less commitments to move on a Thursday than on a, or on a Tuesday than on a Wednesday, and to Counselor Cunningham's point, maybe we, if this motion could go so that we can settle this in August, and then we're done, that, that's all I'm trying to get at, because we ever, we ever, if we move this forward to council this afternoon, we have no time, as far as I'm concerned, to, to discuss it. But the, the motion was to move it to regular council, which is this afternoon, so I'm just trying to make you aware that it's, it's not that I don't support the motion, but it's the timing. We are going from, we want to get it settled, to let's make this, move it to this afternoon, and we're done, and I just don't feel that we have enough time between now and this afternoon to actually say 3:00 on Wednesday every month, we move to 3:00 is, that's, that's all I was trying to get at, so, no, I, I'm in support of the motion, I'm in support of moving the time, I have no problem with that, I just would like more than three or four hours to consider when, that we make it permanent.
Deputy Ward.
Yeah, so, so maybe, maybe procedurally to Counselor Allen's point is probably, probably better, so I'll make an amendment to, to, to the motion, that the start time be 2:30 rather than 3:00, and that the day of the week will be determined, and both of those things, at, at the, the day of the week will be determined at the upcoming August council meeting.
So, there's amendment on the floor, do I have a secondary for that amendment? Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any discussion on that? Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I actually think that the 3:00 time was, was okay, so, as opposed to 2:30, because that, again, that's going to bite into someone else's work time, so, so I guess I'm not in favor of the amended motion for 2:30, but I'm okay with the 3:00 start, and just, and I agree with Counselor Allen that not, yes, I didn't want the decision to be made, I agree, this afternoon, at this afternoon's regular meeting, but more the discussion to go to the August meeting, so, I don't know how we do that.
Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One last final comment from me. We haven't even decided to talk about it, now we're changing time from 3:00 to 2:30, back to 3:00, maybe Wednesday, maybe Tuesday, maybe Thursday. This is what I'm talking about. Let's set something and let's go for it, and leave it at that.
I'm going to say something before I turn the mic over. I don't like the way this discussion is going, we just seem to be pulling numbers and dates and times out of the hat. Does any of you realize, I'm just going to speak about myself personally, what I have to do in the run of a day, just to pick up these arbitrary, arbitrary times and dates, moving it from 2:30? I think a little bit more discussion would be prudent with everybody involved, just not to, to help one or two, because if, I, I'm willing to compromise. Look, don't get me wrong, but I, as, as before I said, I'm, I'm going to vote against both the amendment and the main motion, I'm going to vote both against them, because I don't think that we've actually all had time to at least vet this through, through a little bit more discussion, or at least a little bit of homework. It's, it's just like we're throwing arbitrary dates up in the air. There's also meetings that I would like to attend that happens in the evenings, the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce is one of them. I, I can't attend those because I, I got to chair meetings. That was also a problem that our previous chair, now, maybe we could do something like changing the Committee of the Whole meeting, the way we set them up, only one Committee of the Whole meeting, we do presentations for three hours, so we'll get a little bit of extra time, and then we make, there, there's all different types of options out there. The, the 2:00 or 30 or 3:00 time, that doesn't really bother me all that much, it, it's, it's just the way that we're going about it. I, I'm just sort of disappointed in the way that these dates and times are being thrown around. I, I'd like some time to think about it, however, the amendment does talk, speak to bringing this to the August council meeting, but I'm still going to vote against both the amendment and the main motion. Deputy Ward.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if 3:00 is better for folks, I think that's the intention, I've said it before, I made the amendment to, to maybe make it a little bit more reflective of where we may go, but there's going to be some conversation between here and August, so I mean, that, 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 but the, the, the point is, we, we need to, we need to bring it to, to, to council, and we've got those, that time, 2:30, if it's 3:00, fine, if it's, if it's a different day, fine, but I think that our C E O and our Warden will do some work with, with individual counselors to say, listen, what's, what's sort of the best, it's, it's not going to fit everybody's schedule perfectly, but I think it's an improvement over where we are, and we could, we could continue to delay, but I think some counselors have brought it to the table as several times, and we haven't dealt with it, truth be, truth be told. It's come here five times and just hasn't been dealt with, it's been, so, so that's why I'm making the, I'm taking the bull by the horns and I'm making the motion, the amendment, so I'm going to vote in favor of, of both of them, and, and with the understanding there's some flexibility between now and August to, to, you know, fine tune the thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Deputy Warden, and I would like to say thank you to Madam C E O for pointing out that we can have this discussion yearly. I think, you know, and being, you know, to Counselor Hilton's point of view, being diverse and, you know, going back to a yearly discussion, you know, lives change, committees change, responsibilities change, our organizations that we belong in change, and I think that we should be able to come to a compromise, less than the amount of time. We have, we have bigger things that we should be discussing in the last 10 minutes than when we meet, and I think that, you know, I, I would agree that by the August meeting, we have to come up with something that works for the next year and a year from now, if we need to have the discussion again, we do, because we need to be inclusive and supportive of the people who are representing our community, and it might not work for me, but it might be a, a sacrifice, you know, the date might be a sacrifice that I have to make, but knowing that- that I have to make, but knowing that I have spent three work weeks of my life in six months away from my job, that means no pay, because I take it without pay, again, I understand the sacrifice, and to Counsel Cushing's point, nobody told me when I was elected that it was going to take three weeks of my life in a six-month period, not something that I could even continue to sustain over a four-year period. You know, I appreciate the commitment, but I think that in the last seven to eight months, to Deputy Warden's point, we've talked about it over and over and over again, and by August, we need to have, we need to have something that works for all of us for the next year, understanding there'll be sacrifices. Thank you.
Question being called on the amendment, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Nay. Vote of six to one, motion carried, now we move back, sorry, you vote nay, so vote of five to two, five in favor, two against. So, we'll move back to the main motion, so is there any more discussion on the main motion? Question being called on the main motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Contrary-minded? Nay. A vote of five to two, motion carried. So, we'll move that on to the next August meeting, and thank you very much, council, for your frank discussion on that, I appreciate it. Certainly, even though I voted against the motion, I, as you all know, I'll certainly work and do my best to work on behalf of the council, my schedule may have to change, but it is what it is, and I'll adopt to make it happen when we discuss that in the August meeting, so thank you very much, council, I appreciate everyone's frank discussion. Item number 7.2, Waste Check litter cleanup with community grants. Madam C O?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so council had directed me to do a little bit of work to try and find as many tools as possible to encourage looking after our community better with respect to littering, and so, we had a couple conversations with Waste Check and did a little bit of research, and Waste Check's got a couple of examples where they partner with municipal government to provide financial support to encourage and to incentivize community groups to clean up, to do litter cleanups. And so, in your package for you today was a briefing note from our Economic Development Officer, Community and Economic Development Officer, around how that process works. So, essentially, what I'm recommending is that council make an allotment out of the contingency in the community grants program, which would be set aside at a per kilometer rate, where community groups could work with Waste Check to clean up areas either they've identified or Waste Check could recommend, they do it in a safe way that complies with our solid waste bylaw. Waste Check verifies that the cleanup is done, they make sure that the waste is disposed of correctly, and then they basically issue an invoice to the municipality, and we would make that donation to that community group in exchange for the service they provided to the community doing a litter cleanup. So, that is before you for your consideration and your discussion, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Warden, you have the floor? No, my apologies, Counsel Daniel Allen, you have the floor first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Madam C O, I'm really happy to see this coming forward, we've talked about litter, it's a huge problem, I'm going to jump right out of the gate, because I've looked at this a couple times, I wish we had more money in our contingency rate now, but we don't, so my thoughts are, I would like to make a motion that we move this to regular council, that we approve $1,750 to this program as a starter program, I'm not sure if I'm wording this right, maybe $175 per kilometer, and it'll give us a good indication that, you know, that'll clear up 10 kilometers of land in our municipality over the next year until, and we'll see how this project goes, and if it takes off, then maybe next year, we allot more money and go at it that way.
Okay, before I ask for a second to this motion, can you please restate the motion?
The motion is to move to council that we approve $1,750 out of our contingency money, and offer a $175 per kilometer allotment to nonprofit groups to clean, to pick up litter. Pardon me?
And review at the end of the year?
Well, I'd like to see us review at the end of the year.
Yeah, okay, so there is a motion on the floor, do I have a second, seconded by Counsel Nick Hilton. Is there any discussion on the motion, I do see there's microphones flashing, and the first one up would be Counsel Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Daniel, for making that motion. I'm just wondering through you, Mr. Chair, to our C O, we have money in an operating fund put aside, and I'm just wondering if there's any chance that we could make a further motion that we move some of that, like in surplus funds, into our budget this year to, I know we've passed the budget, but can we not change, make changes, so that we can increase the amount of money that goes into this program?
Absolutely, council can make a motion to take money from the operating reserve to fund any kind of an activity that, under the legislation, it wants to undertake. The recommendation is that we do a beta test, and we see how it goes, we really only have, by the time I get all this in the works, we probably will see activity in late August, September, which is really only six months left in this fiscal year, so I think 10 kilometers would provide some data for council to consider, how much in the next operating budget do you want to set aside for this? So, that's why my recommendation was that, now, certainly if council wants to pull money from reserve, you may or may not spend it all this year, but, you know, I guess the recommendation is, you know, you've got some money to work with and start there, but absolutely, it's council's prerogative.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, I think exactly that we start with what we have, but if we're getting a number of people who are willing to do this, much more requests, and that's when we make a motion to put more money into that fund.
Next one would be Counsel Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counsel Allen and Durkey, for moving this forward, I think the attack on litter is going to be like a four-year project for me, I know a number of us pick up garbage every spring, you know, we're getting to the point where that becomes more difficult, because things are overgrowing, so, you know, the beta test is the great idea, we'll reevaluate it at the end of the year, and then see if we can move this forward next year as well, maybe with a bigger fund, but I think it's important to remember this is just step one, because these are, you know, you're asking people that care about their community to go up and pick up other people's trash, and we haven't really fixed the root of the issue, we're just, we're cleaning up the mess afterwards, so, you know, if we don't do anything to fix the initial problem, we'll be funding this program for years to come, so I'm still following up on some other things that we could do to stop littering in the first place, and education, and I'm still a big fan of the reverse onus by law, we need to make a stand that it's not okay, we don't, why are we investing in our community in other aspects, but letting people throw trash all over it at the same time, so I think this is a great start to that process, and I thank you guys again for being on board.
Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, staff, for bringing this report back to us, and for Counsel Allen bringing forward the motion. The only question I would have in the recommendation of the C O, number four, is possible maximum per community group, and that wasn't addressed in the motion, so I'm not sure if that's something we need to address now, as, again, an amendment to the motion, or a discussion? Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, what I could share with you is, if the motion is silent on that, and we had a community group that was willing to put the effort in to go out and clean it up, then I wouldn't apply a maximum, I would only apply a maximum if that was council's specific direction, so it's your prerogative.
Yeah, I think it's a small beta test, and that's the important thing, so we're going to see this year whether we have, like, a group that wants to do maybe two sections at 175, or three, or, you know, what the interest is, so I think, you know, I mean, generally speaking, staff will manage this, and, you know, if 10 groups come forward, probably we'd split it among those, among those 10 folks, we wouldn't give one group, you know, maybe more than the other, but again, that's, I think that's for staff to manage at this point, and bring back a recommendation about, you know, if you're having a lot of trouble managing that, and it's creating a stir in the community, maybe when we adopt a policy, and, because it is an important thing, we're getting lots of, you know, certainly resident concern about the litter issue, so I think maybe leaving it general at this point, maybe as good as adding that additional max, because there's not a lot out there anyway, but maybe that could be a recommendation of the monitoring, of coming out of the monitoring of the beta test.
Yeah, I agree, I totally agree with that in regards to the beta test, because we don't know, number one, how much groups are, or how many groups are out there that are willing to do something like that and work for that, or if there's only going to be one group. I'd like to see some stats and figures before we move on, talking about maximums, minimums, and stuff like that, or just seeing what the program would do, but I do think it's important that we step up, I like the fact that it's coming from our contingency, out of our community, so, yeah, I agree with that. Any more discussion? Deputy Warden?
Sorry, there's one more comment, there's also, I've done a little of it myself, and it's, and it's a big job, but having said that, I mean, the timing, maybe staff can think about the timing, there is tick season, and that's a public health concern, and I know when things are leaved out, you can't really get in the ditch and see the stuff, so it may be better, you know, wait until the colder weather, or in the spring before things bloom, the tick activity's lower and so forth, and it's less of a public health risk, I don't know if we want people going in the ditches and, you know, potentially contracting Lyme disease, and us kind of potentially encouraging that, so it's really hard to see the garbage in the ditch, not that it makes it better, it's still there, and it shouldn't be there, but I've always found, sort of, you know, later on in the year, sort of that late October, November, before it gets freezing cold, is a better time, and then early in the spring, you know, before the tick activity upticks, so to speak, and, but that's something that maybe staff can look into a little bit more in terms of fine tuning and that, and protecting people's health.
Question being called, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously, thank you, so that's a recommendation that's going to go into the regular council meeting, so that's one. Okay, item number eight, new business, Port Hoxbury Active Trail Project, Deputy Warden Cunningham.
Yes, I noticed that Port Hoxbury received several million dollars, and kudos to them for active transportation trails, you know, in their jurisdiction, and that's been a really important facet of what we want to accomplish here as a council, certainly in our planning documents and so forth, and in fact, we have an active transportation study done some years ago, and we did look for some, I thought that staff looked into Connect Two stream funding for some of our sidewalk projects, and it wasn't available, maybe it didn't fit the project, I don't know, but we do have the Milo project going on, we have a lot of, and we still have the active transportation study, we want to get those things done, so perhaps, just a recommendation to staff to work with our M L A, and certainly government, to see if we can secure funding for those projects and move them along faster, because, you know, climate change is important, we want to get people on more, we want to get people on bikes, and we want to get people on trails, and make it safe to do so in the municipality district of Yarmouth, so perhaps, staff has looked into it and provided some, but perhaps, you know, we could, we need our, we need some funding from the provincial government to help us out with the trails, and we haven't gotten to this point, and maybe we need to work with government and our M L A a little bit more closely to make sure that happens, those would be my comments.
Any more discussion? Counsel Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Deputy Warden for bringing this back to the table, I just have a question for the C O, sorry to put you on the spot, but in relation to the airport stretch, have we opened up any conversations with our partners in relation to that project, an active, possible active transportation trail?
So, Acacia First Nation was the lead agency on that project that had been discussed at a very high level back in 2019, and they've had an election for chief and council, and they've had a change in terms of who their band manager is, so I reached out to Mr. O'Connell, and let him know that when their community was ready to pick up that theme again, that Modi Council was ready to discuss it again, and one thing that I think is really salient tying these two pieces together, Counsel Hilton, is that one thing that made the Port Hoxbury project so successful was, they invested in the first step of the process, and they leveraged the F C M feasibility opportunity to get quantifiable data to demonstrate the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions that could be achieved through certain types of active transportation projects, and what that did was, to the Deputy Warden's point about Connect Two, was, it made a competitive application to the Connect Two program, which helps you offset your design fees for a project. So, I think that's probably something we've been missing in our steps, is getting some quantifiable data that demonstrates how the development of our active transportation projects does a, not just in the active healthy living and the mental health aspect, but the reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions, I think that's a key piece, particularly on the federal government's agenda, that could help move it forward, so to answer your question, Counsel Hilton, yes, I have, reached out to the band manager and asked that when he's ready, we reengage on that file.
Can I follow up to that, so, you know, in our conversations with Paula Fleisch, you'd mentioned in a couple of years, they're talking about maybe possibly repaving the airport stretch, and that we were to be ready for that, so I would like to, at some point, have our partners at the table to have that discussion on what that would look like. I would like to make that a motion, please, that we send a letter to our partners, the Acacia First Nations, the town of Yarmouth, and copy, I'm not sure, the Minister of Transportation, and our M L A, to start the conversation about, around what an active transportation trail through the airport stretch would look like, or Route Three.
All right, a motion on the floor, do I have a second, seconded by Counsel Allen. I know Counsel Cushing wanted to speak, I don't know if it's directly on this motion, but I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Counsel Cushing.
Well, it wasn't exactly on that motion, which is a good point that Counsel Hilton brought up, mine was going to be, was directed as some of our deputy wards' comments, that we should be looking at some funding for some of our active transportation. I believe that our last Lake Milo project that we're working on there, consultants were well aware of the Blue Root projects that the government are funding, and they will be looking into that, and I believe the next time we have a Lake Milo active transportation meeting, that we'll have an update on it, so, yes, we are looking into some of that. Mike, right, C O?
Yes. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously, so that's the second motion that's going to go over to the regular council meeting. Thank you. All right, item 8.2, Ferry Terminal Phase Two, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
All right, this is a recent news story, and as you're well aware, council voted, I think it was, to support the current series of renovations for $1.4 million, it's $1.2, sorry, a mistake, $1.2 million, so significant contribution to the refurbishment of the ferry terminal grounds. The ferry is, I think, going to run next year, it's been canceled for this year, and in the news story, the mayor of Yarmouth says she expects more financial assistance from from other levels of government, neighboring municipalities, for the second phase upgrades, and that's really around the, my understanding at this point, is that's really around the ferry terminal building itself. There have been upgrades, but Border Protection Services requires additional enhancements, my meager understanding of it, to provide the service. And I think in the news story, she's talking about a pretty quick turnaround, maybe for the next season. So, but in any event, those are all details I'm not absolutely sure of. I'm only hearing, I'm only reading what the public can read. And, you know, the expectation of financial assistance is, you can see that potentially. But I think we need to invite the town to, you know, a committee of the whole meeting to give us more information as council about the project and any potential involvement that we may have in it. I mean, we don't own the property, but we have contributed handsomely to the refurbishment of the property, which I think was a good decision. But again, I think that we need to be fully apprised of the continuing developments at our ferry terminal, not our ferry terminal, the town's ferry terminal, but it's regional benefit, certainly. But, you know, we need to be kept closely in the loop if we're going to be asked for a lot of money to support additional phases of refurbishment and renewal. So I'll make a motion that we invite the Town of Yarmouth to present an update at a future committee of the whole meeting about concerning the additional ferry terminal enhancements.
Okay. A motion on the floor. Do I have a second under? Seconded by Counselor Durkey. The next one that was on would be Counselor Nick Hilton. You could either speak or speak to the motion.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just more for discussion on the topic. You know, I read this in the paper as well, and, you know, we're heavily invested in the project, and we also were lucky enough to have a tour by Mark Brophy, the engineer on site, and some of the work that they've accomplished, and he also spoke to some of the work that needs to be completed. It is the first eyes that people will see, or the first thing that people will see when they come into our community. So, you know, we want it to be pleasing, and some of that work revolved around pavement to be laid in the parking lot in Phase Two, as well as what the requirements for Canadian Border Services. So I think it would be really good to hear from probably Mark at an upcoming meeting so that we can plan and have full discussion around what their ask would be. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. So that's the third item to go over to the regular council meeting. All right. Item eight point three, land acknowledging. Counselor Sheri Hurlberg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Land acknowledgements are Indigenous traditions and protocols done to pay respect to the people and history of the lands we are situated on. It's important for the municipality of the District of Yarmouth to apply attention to the importance of the unceded territory on which we live, work, and play on a regular basis. It's timely that our council develop a land acknowledgement that would be genuine, earnest, and extend sensitivity, respect, and courtesy, and tribute to the First Nations in a positive spirit of reconciliation. I would make a motion that staff research best practices with proper and meaningful language to create a land acknowledgement that we as council can institute at our meetings and also be placed on our website.
Motion on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that motion? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. Moving on. Item eight point four, cellular phone service. Counselor Hurlberg, something near and dear to my heart as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I can probably speak for the majority of us around this council table, that we have residents, or I have residents on a regular basis calling me, asking me how we, as council, can move this forward. I know we cannot do it on our own, and as part of our strategic plan, we did talk about it in great length under economy and cell services there. I had a couple of residents reach out to me just this week, not counting any of the ones before this week, who asked if there was anything that we could be doing to help move this forward. In my community, in my district, we have a fire department that has absolutely no cell reception at all in the area from Deerfield right on through to Pleasant Valley, and I think that for the safety of our community, and, you know, we have residents who have to continue to have landlines because they don't have proper cell service, and I know as part of our strategic priority, we say we're going to advocate with Develop Nova Scotia, and I'm reading verbatim, to develop, to improve cell service residential funds in Nova Scotia Internet Trust, engage with provincial government to support cellular service infrastructure, and through private sector and public sector relationship, advance cell service. So I would, through you, Mr. Chair, through, to staff, maybe we can have a discussion today, or just move it forward to, you know, a regular council meeting to figure out how we can move this important topic. We've done a great job. Our partners have done a great job with internet service, but I think cell service is the next one that we have to tackle. I'm not sure how we do that. I'm not sure what the next steps are, but just willing to have some discussion and guidance. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to Counselor Hurlberg, I did have a conversation. So the model that we use that had so much success with rural internet was working regionally and collaborating through our regional enterprise network to create kind of that nucleus or economies of scale, and making that compelling argument about the fact that there's a region with a high population that has a significant communications infrastructure gap, which is what you're talking about. And we pointed out a lot of the educational and safety issues on the rural internet file as what Counselor Hurlberg has shared this morning. So I did speak with the CEO of the Western REN in advance of our meeting today, and I shared with her what you have kind of laid out in your strategy, and certainly that's important work that needs to be done and was done, leading up to the success with the rural internet project. And so the Board of Directors at the Western REN are just about to enter into laying the groundwork for their next strategic plan, and while it's not official yet, the partners in the regional enterprise network are raising the same concern we are with cell service. So I expect that you will be engaged by your regional enterprise network about cell service, how does it fit into that strategy? And so, you know, it's a long game, Counselor Hurlberg. We've been working on the rural internet file, I think, in earnest, probably since about 2012, when the federal government first started talking about the CRTC fund and the federal fund, and then the internet trust, I think, came into place, I'm going to say 2015, 16, maybe, something like that. And then there was an election, and then it was added to Develop Nova Scotia's mandate. They geared up and hired staff and started awarding the projects, and here we are in 2021, you know, really kind of in the latter stages of that initiative. So I guess I would share with you to your question, you know, what can council do? How can we move forward? We've got a model that worked. It wasn't quick, but it did work. I mean, we've achieved success. We are going to have fiber to the home in communities that I never thought we'd see. So, you know, I would recommend that we definitely replicate that model, if we can, with our partners, in addition to anything else that makes sense that comes up to advance that issue.
Cell and internet service has always been something that's been on my radar since I was elected councillor in 2008. And it was kind of funny, because back during Hurricane Arthur happened and Hurricane Dorian, it was funny to see the telecommunications guy going in buckets in their trucks to go up in the air high enough so they could pull a cell tower from the Pleasant Valley, or not Pleasant Valley, but up in the Hebron area. When we were talking about this current project that we have going over the REN and other municipalities in regards to internet service, I always made a point to say it was internet and cell. It was very important back then. I guess half of the job is almost done, and the other half has got to come along a lot quicker than, as the CEO alluded to, starting on it in 2012. I remember talking about 2008. It's always been an issue. Technology's changing faster than I can even keep up with, but it's boiling down to that I'm hoping that with all the fiber op installation around the communities, that the companies have better options. There's also, from my understanding, 5G. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but that's more of a local-based or smaller transmitter like on every other telephone pole and some of them that I've read about. There's all kinds of options out there. A lot of the infrastructure is going down, because before the cell towers, they had to have access to fiber or even coax cable. But it is improving, and I certainly agree that we need to keep this on our radar, and it needs to go on the provincial and federal government's radar even stronger, because communications is key in this fast-paced world. Deputy, sorry. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Hurlberg. As the warden said, too, this is a huge concern of mine. You know, you're driving around the community and you lose cell service, even through areas like Hebron and Wellington, and calls drop in Port Maitland consistently. So I would like to, I think I'd like to make a motion that we write a letter to our MP and our MLA and the REN, and copy all of CRTC, whoever we need to, with regards to the importance of improved cell service for health and safety of our residents.
Okay. A motion on the floor. Do I have a second under? Seconded by Counselor Sheri Hurlberg. Any discussion on that motion?
Question being called.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. So that's the fourth recommendation from Committee of the Whole to vote in regular And that is the end of our agenda, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.